Regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council. A wonderful, old room and that's always great to see around here. Call this meeting to order and we have the roll call please.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Parbat.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Barnes.
Here. And Brock, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into the acceptance of the agenda or do we have any urgency articles?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Mr. Rayham make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion pass. Okay, we're good. Consent agenda, the following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Ordinances, waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of November 19th, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the Mendocino complex fire. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the October 2019 PSPS. Adopt the resolution accepting construction of South Main Street pavement rehabilitation project by Lemon Construction, Lemon, Lemon Construction Company Incorporated and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. Would any members from council like to pull any of these items? Anyone from the public? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public input, any person may speak for three minutes about any subject within the authority of the city council, provided the subject is not already on tonight's agenda. Would anybody here like to take their opportunity for public input? Seeing none? I will move on to your presentation. Representatives from First Five California will give a presentation titled State of Our Children.
Mr. Rayham?
Yes.
Alright. Just want to clarify that the presentation will not be by First Five California. It will be by a conglomeration of community advocates for children. I'm the executive director for First Five Lake County. So that's probably where the fusion came in there. So good evening, we are excited to be here with you tonight, Lakeport City Council, mayor and city staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity. In my role as executive director of First Five Lake County, I am daily confronted with the tremendous needs and challenges facing our county's and county's children and their families. But I'm also daily rubbing shoulders with people and organizations that are doing the work to meet those challenges. Even with so many tremendous programs and services available, the outcomes for Lake County's children are discouraging and they're deeply concerning. Today I'm here along with many community partners to bring awareness to some of the most concerning childhood outcomes in Lakeport and our community, to advocate for greater emphasis on primary prevention and to request that the city of Lakeport partner with us in 2020 to address these concerns more directly. The report on the state of our children which you have and the supporting materials as well as the website we created at stateofarchildren.org are the results of collective input over the last 10 months. We aren't just showing up spur of the moment. We've been hard at work to have something to bring to you and to have something to speak from. If you are here tonight in support of this effort, I would ask that you stand as I list off the organizations that are represented. Lake County Probation, Lake County Office of Education, Lake Family Resource Center, Lake County Departments of Child Welfare and Social Services, Lake County Public Health Department, Redwood Community Services, Lake County Children's Council, Court Appointed Special Advocates of Lake and Mendocino Counties, Redwood Coast Regional Center, Lake County Tribal Health, Adventist Health Clear Lake, Motherwise, Lakeview Health Center, Easter Seals of Northern California, Northwest Opportunities and First Five Lake County. These are our partners. Tonight you will briefly hear from three of them. Kim Tangerman, the Director of Lakeview Health Center on the State of Health for Our Children. Brock Falkenberg, Superintendent of Lake County Schools on the State of Education. And Wendy Monfrans, Chief Deputy Probation Officer for the County on the State of Our Families. You will also hear from two young people who will read a local success story about a former Lakeport Unified School District student. So we welcome Genesis and Abigail Goran with us as well. We will go quickly and we want to leave time for you to ask any questions that you may have. We hope the information we're going to provide to you today is going to help you join us in our sense of urgency about the state of our children and the path forward and that we'll be able to answer your questions and begin to form a real partnership in the year ahead that's going to make a great difference in the next generation and those to follow. So I'd like to introduce Kim Tangerman.
Hi. Thank you for letting us be here today. My name is Kim Tangerman and I am opposite of most people, I have to take my glasses off. I'm the Director of the Lakeview Health Center as well as the Chair of the Metro Child and Adolescent Health Advice Report. In 2015, SafeRx Lake County was launched. It was, it's an initiative through Hope Rising Collaborative to address the opiate issues in Lake County and to better support the providers by developing policies and writing prescribing guidelines. Since that launch, the county has seen a reduction, 75% reduction of opiate prescriptions overall and over 50% reduction in initial opiate prescription starts. Even with these great outcomes and these valiant efforts, many, um, many we, valiant efforts, oh, by many, we continue to see a rise in perinatal drug use as well as fetal alcohol and substance use exposure. We are also recognizing low rates of unemployment in prenatal care in the first trimester. All of these indicators contribute to an extremely rough start for the members of our most vulnerable population. Unfortunately, the data on our youth is also disturbing. We have had more than our fair share of trauma-related events in this county over the last several years resulting in more childhood depression, suicidal behavior and substance use. The number of children using drugs is on the increase while the age of first use has now dropped to the age of eight years old. I find this unacceptable and extremely preventable. We are also seeing more teen pregnancies lately. Some that are using substances and they're not getting early care again resulting in harm to their unborn children. The next steps to improve the lives of the children and the families in Lake County is a call, is to call all hands on deck for coordinated efforts, additional resources and to focus on prevention and recovery. I truly believe that we are at a place that collectively will be able to make a difference. We need to make the youth in this county our priority. We need to support prevention as a priority through education, access to care and no wrong door approach. This is the call to action. Thank you.
Good evening, Brock Falkenberg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools. Before I start to talk a little bit about the State of Our Children report, I wanted to make three points. First of all, study after study shows that the key to addressing the long-term vitality of any community is through our youth. Secondly, education and the related outcomes and its related outcomes are an important part of every child's development. And thirdly, our schools, Lake County schools are staffed by terrific teachers, care and classified personnel and these are all hardworking and dedicated individuals. And they are effective. The State of Our Children report candidly shows our gap. And we have a gap in educational outcomes. What the study does not show is that we are experiencing improvement in our educational statistics over the last four years. Our test scores are improving. Our third grade reading is improving. Our status is improving. This is in spite of the fact for, in spite of the fact that for the last five years we have experienced shortened school years as a result of fires and floods and now PSPSs. But this growth is not enough, this improvement is not enough. As a group, the students in Lake County start school already behind those from more affluent counties. Based on where our students start, we need our kids to grow more than one year for each year they are enrolled in school. We need to do more and we need to do it faster than other counties. The gap is wide and we need to acknowledge that. But we're also asking for help. We need the community to buy into the fact that youth are the key to our future vitality, that school is important and that graduation matters. I'd like to share a fact that's not in the report. A comparison of attendance rates for third, for first through third grade students indicates that Lake County has the lowest attendance rate of any county in the state of California. These are not high school students choosing to cut school. These are five-year-olds to eight-year-olds. These kids are not choosing to stay home from school. These kids are prevented from attending school by their parents who are unable or unwilling to get them there every day. Poverty, adverse childhood experiences, generational trauma, homelessness, absentee parents, addiction, et cetera, are just a few of the barriers to success that we need to collaboratively overcome. James Heckman is a Nobel laureate in economics and he studied early childhood education programs from an economic perspective. His findings determined that every dollar invested generated a 13% return per annum. So if I'm a little loose on my numbers and I compound that over 18 years, that's an investment I want to make. An investment in our students and our children. And it's not an investment that's subject to the swings and sways of the stock market. By leveraging resources and collaboratively addressing the fundamental needs of our youth today, we can assure the social and economic vitality critical to sustaining our county and our communities for the next 60 years. So as the Lake County Superintendent of Schools, I'm here to say that the schools and our staffs are committed and we ask that you join us. Thank you for your time. And I'd like to introduce Wendy Monfrans from Lake County probation.
Sorry, I can't, too tall. Good evening, I'm Wendy Monfrans, I'm the Chief Deputy Probation Officer. And I'm here to talk to you about the safety and security of children in Lake County. In 2018, there were 925 reports of child abuse or neglect made in Lake County. That is one report every 10 hours. Of those, there were 117 substantiated victims of child abuse. 76.9% of these were for general neglect and 15.4% for caretaker absence or incapacity. As a result of this, 73 children entered foster care through the child welfare system. Also in 2018, 336 youth were arrested by the various law enforcement agencies in Lake County. 71% of the youth arrested were males and 154 were placed on probation. At any one time, there is an average of six youth in juvenile hall. We house the juvenile, uh, youth in juvenile hall in Tahama County. It's about a two and a half hour drive and the children are kept from seeing their families either by Skype or weekly visits when we bring them down. Of the 154 youth on probation, nine were in the foster care system as a result of their actions and the instability in their homes. Because of the lack of resource families and treatment options in Lake County, all foster youth placed on probation are placed out of the county. Why is this information important? Because we as a community can help reduce the risk of families become, risk that these families become one of the statistics. How? It's through protective factors. Protective factors are things that help strengthen families. As a community, the agencies in Lake County have come together to speak this common language and use the factors in all of their interactions with families in Lake County. The agencies have been dedicated in training their staff on this principle and ensuring fidelity in the implementation of the use of protective factors. The protective factors are parental resilience, social connections, knowledge of parenting and child development, concrete supports in times of need and social and emotional competence of children. These factors mitigate and eliminate risk in families and communities thereby increasing the health and wellbeing of children and families. They promote skills, personal characteristics, knowledge, relationships and opportunities to offset risk factors, allowing families to negotiate difficult circumstances and fare better in social and school, work and life. We ask that you consider these factors when you make decisions that affect children and families in Lakeport. Thank you.
Genesis and Abigail? You ready? Come on.
Let's see whose mic doesn't work.
Uh, one of those two.
That's one of those. You're checking your feet.
So anyway, yes, microphone malfunction and now we are ready to listen to what you have to say.
Allison was placed in foster care at the age of 18 months. Lake County Fost-, a Lake County Foster family picture at Children's Hospital in Oakland on Christmas Eve. She was covered from head to toe with bruises and lacerations and was suffering from a concussion and a lacerated liver. She had been exposed to both drugs and alcohol in utero and at 18 months old her, yeah, 18 months old, her ACE score would have easily been six or seven. The Scotts adopted Allison when she was five years old. Allison is now 18 years old. If statistics ruled her outcome, Allison would have dropped out of high school, been using drugs and alcohol and experiencing a teen pregnancy. But Allison is now a strong-eyed woman that has overcome many obstacles. School has never come easy for her but she worked hard and will be studying at San Jose State this fall, pursuing a career as a pediatrician.
I would tell you other children and young adults in Lake County have, that have pressure. Anything and everything will lead to success. So you see it through to the end and don't give up. I would encourage them by showing them that you can be who they want you to be. Your, your past does not define you. It will always be a part of you but you don't have to let it be, uh, let it, let it define you, be you. Wanting to si-, wanting to be a success, um, story kept, yeah, story kept me from giving up and being my heart. I want to be a part of this, I want to be a part of a narrative that inspires other people to overcome what they have gone through and not let their past define them.
What are you most looking forward to as you leave for college and what makes you feel most equipped to take this next big life step? I am looking forward to finding out how I can become involved in bettering the foster care system and being able to help or inspire other children who have gone through something similar. I feel most equipped to take this next li-, big life step because of my mother's involvement with the community here in Lake County. I hope one day to make a difference as she has.
Good job. That was just one example of many success stories that are on the State of Our Children website. We wanted to make sure that while we shared with you some of the difficult statistics, we also showed you the people who are beating the odds in our community and they are, their stories are inspiring. If we were, just going to wrap up here. If we were to compare Lakeport to a beautiful older home in need of some repairs, it would be easy enough to identify a broken window, missing roof tiles, peeling paint or water damage and we could acknowledge the difficulty of trying to live daily life in a house that needs little work while rolling up our sleeves and tackling those projects one at a time as the budget allowed. But what if one day we became aware that there was a damage to the foundation of the house that's compromising the structural integrity of the entire dwelling? Which improvement project would take priority then? The foundation must take priority. Our children, the next generation of Lakeport citizens, are the foundation of its future. And the types of negative outcomes that our children are experiencing that you've heard about tonight and you can read in the report so early in life are a clear signal that our foundation is damaged. We can't afford to live and tackle our honey-do list of worthwhile community projects while ignoring the need to reinforce the foundation. In the success story that was shared, we heard how the Scott family worked together to reinforce the foundation of Allison's life and they did so at a very young age. Because of their early intervention and ongoing love and support, she is thriving. It is certainly the responsibility of each family to care for their own children and nurture them. But when you see that half of our children are entering school without the skills they need to succeed and that our beautiful little community is outpacing the state averages in perinatal substance use, child maltreatment, youth substance use and the prevalence of poverty, you know that our foundation needs shoring up and that it will be an all-hands-on-deck kind of job that needs to start immediately through increased prevention efforts that keep the cracks from developing in the first place. There are three levels of prevention. Primary prevention involves intervening at the general population level before negative outcomes ever occur. Promoting those protective factors that Wendy mentioned earlier and decreasing or eliminating the risk factors for all families. Secondary prevention targets those who are most at risk for that negative outcomes and proactively provides extra supports. And tertiary prevention involves early intervention where negative outcomes have already occurred in an effort to prevent recurrence and minimize future damage. There are many, many agencies, this is only some of them, who are here with us today in Lake County who are providing secondary and tertiary prevention services but primary prevention is significantly lacking in our community. And we believe the first step in that direction is raising awareness and providing education in our community. We would like to invite you to partner with us in 2020 in four ways. First, we would ask that you join us in providing one or more opportunities in the city of Lakeport. Maybe a town hall, some sort of a gathering to bring the state of our children to the attention of Lakeport's residents and together look for ways to elevate prevention in our community, creating a solid foundation for the future of the city. Number two, we'd love to add the city of Lakeport's logo to the back of the State of the Children project and honor you as true partners in the work ahead. Number three, we would love to see a representative from Lakeport City Council to attend as many Children's Council meetings and resilient Lake County meetings as possible in 2020 to be involved in rolling up sleeves and creating the prevention plan together with your input. And lastly, we would ask that you consider what you can do in the coming year to learn about and promote primary prevention for yourself, in your own family, in your own neighborhood and in your city. We're here to answer any questions that you have and we'll be here in the future to roll up our sleeves and work on these issues together with you. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you do for the city and this community, we really appreciate each of you.
Thank you, that was a very informative and moving presentation from your group. Outstanding. Does anyone from council have anything they would like to ask?
Just maybe we can put it on the agenda?
Get it scheduled to put on the agenda?
You can bring it back that to become part of their, their work, their organization that they're ask, that they're asking.
I'd like to take this opportunity since we have such a large group here today. There's something that happened during World War II with the Nazis and a country, Denmark and, and what they call the Dutch Hunger Winter. And what happened was the Nazis were diverting food to the failing war effort and they took the food away from, from Holland and wherever up in that area. And there were 16,000 people that died and there was a number of pregnant women that were there and they gave them food that the survivors were feeding them and they ended up surviving and they were starving during their second, third trimesters in a lot of cases. And what ended up happening was that the next generation, because they were starving, their fetuses were treated in a certain way and they came out to be, um, they, they were taking all the nutrients in and their children were affected. And they had a tendency to have metabolic syndrome and be overweight and have all these issues. But the really bad news is their crated children had the same problem. And so what this says is what happens now with a fetus is a problem. But what happens with the next generation and the next generation, it becomes a huge problem. This is such a pervasive thing. When someone goes and buys a car, they go online, they check the prices, they look it up, they do all this stuff. When they have a child, so many times they don't think about anything. They're under the influence of alcohol or drugs and they're bringing a life into the world that can affect that child's grandchild. This is a big thing. During the second and third trimester, there's 5,000 cells in the brain being formed at the same time under the influence of alcohol, meth, cocaine. This is even bigger than maybe some of you people even know. Epigenetics has proven that we are affecting people two generations down the line. So we need to get in front of this but we need to teach people. And I think Tina and someone from the health department were talking about, if you're thinking about getting pregnant, think about buying a car. You're not just going to walk down there and buy a car, you need to do everything and put it in place. This is really serious, you're bringing a life into the world. Start changing your lifestyle, talking vitamins, doing all this stuff because you could be affecting your grandchildren. And most people don't know that, they never learned that. This is really serious and that's why we're having these horrible raises. Because people, they go out and have a frolic, next thing you know they bring a kid in the world and guess what? It becomes a multi-generational problem and that's exactly what we have here. Because they don't understand, they don't take the responsibility to bring a child into the world in the way that it should be done and should be cherished and loved and put together with all the vitamins, the nutrition and all that stuff. And that's not happening because they don't take it that seriously. They actually spend more time buying stereo equipment than they, in a car than they do bringing a child into the world. So take that with you and I'm sorry to bring you down but it's really serious.
Thank you Kenny.
Maybe.
I mean, I, I think we're all very well aware of, you know, the issue, maybe not to the depth that you just expounded, thank you. But, um, yeah, absolutely, I think this is a worthwhile thing to get behind. I, I do have some questions. What is no wrong door? I heard the term no wrong door. What, what is that?
We've been working as a community very diligently to understand each other's programs well enough. So if someone comes to me and they have a need, I don't just say, I'm sorry, I don't, we don't do that here. I say, oh, I know Anna Santana and she does that, hold on, stay right here, let me call her. So that would be no wrong door for anyone in the county to walk in who needs help.
Wow, go figure, that makes sense. Thank you.
I don't want to go back and give more questions.
You know, um, I, I was baffled by the report that our, our first through third graders have the lowest attendance of any other county in California. And I'm just wondering, don't we have a truancy officer that goes after, that, that follows up? Brock Brad? Do we have somebody watching this?
Truancy?
Truancy graders? Well, yeah, I mean, if we're talking foundational level here, the truancy officers should get a report of, you know, Johnny who missed four out of the five days of first grade so that we can stop that behavior in first grade.
First of all, the statistic doesn't just address the concept of truancy, it addresses the concept of chronic absenteeism and absenteeism in general. And in direct answer to your question, there is no longer a truancy officer functioning within this county.
Maybe there should be.
Is that California standing or is it just the county, the new rules in California or?
There's no, there's no funding for a truancy officer, and it's currently not being funded in this county. And several of our surrounding counties as well, so.
That might be a good thing to fund.
Well, on that same, on that same thing, you know, I mean, if we know these kids are not going to school because of the parents, are we doing anything to the parents?
That's what I was getting at, that would be the truancy officer. You know, at that low of a grade level, it would be a, I mean, I think I remember back when I went to school, if you were, if the truancy officer went and knocked on your parents' door, they got a fine, and you got dragged to school. That's what I recall, I could be wrong, because I didn't have a truancy problem. Because I look back at the day where, anyway, my mom and grandma were not gonna say that, but mom and grandma ensured that I went to school.
Be happy to come back and talk about this specific related to truancy and the consequences of truancy in a more detailed setting in the future if you wish.
Okay.
Sounds like a good part for the town hall.
Yeah, that would be great for the town hall. Anyway, that's, I've got more, but I can, it's okay. Some of the numbers are staggering.
When I first moved to Lake County in 2000, I was really fortunate that I had a little job with Healthy Start. And so part of my job was attending the Children's Council meetings at that time. And I was impressed with the level of collaboration that was taking place then. And in fact, I remember frequently, members of the Children's Council would come back and say that they were reporting out at the state level or at this meeting or something, and that Lake County was like a model, that other people, other people from other jurisdictions or counties or industries are like, "Wow, you guys are really talking." And so the no wrong door seems like a natural thing for us, it's just actually putting a label on what we're already really fortunate to have here. So also, if I could request, Carly, that I get on the email agenda for Children's Council and the Lake County Resiliency Council?
Resiliency, Lake County is a subcommittee.
That'd be great, because I'm not here in town all the time, but I gotta make a few of them, so I'll make that a priority. Thank you.
Same. Is there anything else from any council member? Would any member of the public like to add on to the question? If you're gonna do it, do it with style.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about what I'm gonna talk about next. I'm Jennifer Nielsen, I'm a licensed therapist, I work at Lake Family Resource Center, heading up the Behavioral Health Services Department. Lake County, Lake First Five contacted us in September and said, "We need somebody from your agency to go travel to Boston and get trained in this training called Stewards of Children Darkness to Light." And it's a child sexual abuse prevention training for adults. And so it's really what we're talking about, everything that everybody has said really fits well into what I'm gonna talk about here for a minute. Lot of statistics. These aren't just Lake County, these are our children in general. Ninety percent of children are victims of sexual abuse and know their abuser. Thirty percent of children who are sexually abused is at the hands of a family member. Sixty percent of children who are sexually abused by someone the whole family trusts. Forty percent are sexually abused by children who are older or more powerful. And less than 10% of children are actually sexually abused by a stranger. So we've got some pretty staggering statistics. And this curriculum is about what can adults do? How do adults help children navigate this pretty awful statistics that we're talking about? So as a therapist working at Lake Family Resource Center, primarily, we're working with abused children. We have a wonderful opportunity to work with until they're 18. We don't have a time limit for how long, and that's really great, because with the kind of trauma we're talking about, we need time. But at the same time, we gotta get moving. We've got generations of people, children, families who are impacted by sexual abuse. One of the most difficult things to hear was that the average person does not talk about their abuse until they're 52. So we're not only talking, depending on when it happened as a child, we're not just talking about kids who can't go to school or won't go to school, or having all sorts of trauma symptoms that are keeping them from being able to learn and function, but as they grow, we're talking about people who may or may not be able to function in our society and are so traumatized and frankly damaged that they don't know what to do as a parent when it's their time to protect children. Nobody protected them. So when I came back from that training, I just couldn't wait to talk to my boss and to tell her that my personal goal is to train a thousand people in Lake County. This is a two-hour training. It's personal in that you look at what you can do. What can adults do? Because right now, we're not hitting the mark. We're not protecting children. And the five steps are easy, and yet they're complicated. I didn't understand at the beginning of the training why they would be talking about this venture of protecting children would be risky. Why would that be risky for us to protect children? That just doesn't sound right. But when we're talking about learning the facts, understanding that we can minimize opportunity, us as adults, making sure that children aren't in situations where they can be hurt, making sure that we believe children no matter what, and then move forward. Making sure that we talk about it, that we are all aware of these statistics. The fact that we need to recognize the signs. It isn't just the abusers grooming children, they groom families so that they can infiltrate and perpetrate. So that's a little bit scary. What do we do about that? I think one of the ways is, step five is, well, step four is recognize the signs, step five is to react responsibly and learn what does that mean, and that is going to take courage. Everything that we're talking about today is impacted and woven in to how children grow up, their attachment. Everything that Candace said was so important about the generations of families who are impacted, and we need to stop it. So I came home, went straight away to Lisa, my boss, the executive director, and I said, "I wanna train a thousand people, like, let's make it happen." Partnering with Lake Family, or partnering with First Five, they are willing to put money for books, the expense is $10 a book. You leave with this information. One thing that's really cool in here, which I think we could all look at doing, is what's a code of conduct with children? I'm not aware, and I don't know if Brock knows, that we have that in schools, for example. That looks like a side hug, a high five, not being alone with children, making sure that we protect ourselves and them. Making sure that when we suspect, that most of the time, there is an adult, another adult who knows this is happening. This is happening to our children who are sitting in classrooms right now. So I would like to offer the opportunity to train all of you and train, like I said, a thousand community members, and we're partnering with all of our partners to make this happen. Starting with the First Five Commission, is that hopefully?
I'd like to present it again.
We're hoping for that. I'm gonna train my whole agency, Lake Family Resource Center, in early January, and then we're just looking to any organization that wants to train, and then start opening it up to the community. So hopefully, in one of these town hall meetings or in some event that we're all doing together, we can provide this information to the public. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. I'll know when your training is over.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else?
Just thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for all the work you've done.
Difficult topic to think about. But it just makes it so much clearer how fortunate we are to have such a dedicated group of people fighting every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All right. Well, thank you very much for that, and we will follow up. Probably, hopefully, the next council meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll bring it back.
We'll bring it back, put it on the agenda, and have you put the City of Lakeport seal on the back of your packet.
He'll be the first.
As long as we have that vote. My mind isn't made up yet, I have to hear all of the evidence first. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and move into our public hearing. The first is for the Dig Once ordinance. Who's on Dig Once?
Oh, no, you all really wanna stay for this.
Especially the kids. Where are you shoveling? I told you, you should've put on a red nose in the wig.
Did you still have a clear?
Well, thank you all for coming. All right, I think we're good to go.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. This first ordinance before you this evening is a principal element of the Lake County Master Broadband Plan, which was presented to this council a few meetings ago. The proposed ordinance puts in place a process for the notification of all potential utilities when any undergrounding or any street utility work is being conducted. And this notification would allow other utilities to coordinate their undergrounding efforts with other projects, resulting in significant cost savings to those utilities, and then enhance telecommunications availability to the residents of Lakeport. The mechanism for this notification will be made part of the city's right-of-way encroachment permit process, and would apply to city projects, utility company work, and private development projects. All utilities would be responsible for their own work, and the ordinance only requires the notification. The permit holder will not be saddled with the costs of accommodating these other utilities, it's just a notification process so other utilities can jump on. This program has been highly successful in expanding broadband availability in other regions, and similar ordinances are currently underway, may have already been completed for both the city of Clear Lake and the county of Lake as well. More than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Anything from council?
Just one question, are there any differences between the two cities and the county?
The only thing I'm aware of is, I think, and I haven't followed up on how it went, but I know in the initial introduction at the county, there was some conversation about putting some provisions in there that regardless of the notification, that the utility provider, that was the county, would be putting in these utilities. We've talked a little bit about it at our Department of Public Works level, to kind of see if we can come up with sort of a standard, you know, kind of pipe size or something to make sure that there is room in the future, so we're not constantly cutting up the streets, and if another provider comes in at a later date, it's easier. Obviously, the easiest thing would be to do when the trench is open, but we didn't feel that it was necessary to put that in the ordinance, but I think it's something that we'll consider as a kind of a best practice. But other than that, I think they're all, they're all the same.
Anything else from council?
All of this is gonna be going through the planning commission, right? When they're gonna dig up the streets and stuff like that, are they gonna go through there and say, you know, "Did you guys notify these people?"
No, not necessarily. I mean, so if tomorrow someone came in for an encroachment permit, say they're, you know, gonna underground the utility connection in front of their storefront or residence or something like that, that's just an encroachment permit that we do in-house. It's reviewed by our city engineer, public works, department staff, and community development department staff. What we'll do as part of this ordinance is, part of that application would include a notification period where the utilities would be notified of this work, and they'd have a time period in which to coordinate that effort. And that, like I said before, that any cost, say, you know, say AT&amp;T just is doing work and MediaCom wants to come in, AT&amp;T is not gonna be responsible for paying for MediaCom's work, that's just notifying MediaCom that it's being done, and they can tie in while that trench is open to save costs. But larger projects, you know, say we do something large like Second Street Door, things like that, those are, those are things that sometimes come before council or the planning commission. But the smaller ones, it would just be part of the actual encroachment permit that's issued.
Thank you. Ray? With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this topic, you can come up. She, go ahead. Seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adding Chapter 15.28 telecommunications infrastructure improvements to the Lakeport Municipal Code, establishing a Dig Once policy for the city of Lakeport.
Second? A motion at a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Telecom ordinance.
You're stuck with me again, Mr. Mayor? As your council recall, in April of this year, an urgency ordinance was adopted in order to protect the city's ability to review and approve small wireless communication facilities, consistent with the recently adopted SEC guidelines. As part of the adoption of the urgency ordinance, your council also gave direction to staff to review the ordinance with the planning commission to make sure it was consistent with other provisions of the zoning ordinance. The planning commission did review the urgency ordinance in both May and July, and ultimately made the recommendation that the council adopt the revised ordinance, presented in attachment in one of your staff report this evening. On initial read, it may appear that the planning commission made drastic revisions to the urgency ordinance. However, these presented changes are best viewed as kind of format changes that I believe make the process more understandable to a potential applicant and the general public. Additionally, many of the proposed changes recommended integrate the kind of the language that our zoning ordinance already speaks, and kind of it ties in this new process into that, rather than, rather than it being a standalone process on its own, we did quite a bit of effort, Dan Chan specifically in my office did quite a bit of effort, kind of making sure to tie it in so it made sense within our existing ordinance. In the, and because of that, that's why, I know at last hearing, when you read it, you had to read through all the different, different sections of the ordinance that we are now permitting. And I think, as much of a tongue twister as that is, it makes it a lot easier on the process. Anybody, they can come in, figure out what their zoning is, and look directly in that section of zoning ordinance and see, okay, this type of wireless permit requires a use permit, or it's allowed, or it requires a zoning permit, and then you can, it gives direction to flip back to that chapter, rather than it just being its own standalone ordinance. Attachment two to your report this evening includes the original urgency ordinance with all the proposed changes recommended by the planning commission called out. In a nutshell, these proposed changes can be summarized as follows. Like I just described, removing, kind of integrating it as a holistic into the zoning ordinance, rather than its own standalone process, and establishing development standards for each type of wireless facility described in the ordinance, and integrating it into our already-used use permit and zoning permit procedures outlined zoning ordinance. The urgency ordinance contained a lot of repetitive and redundant language, making it difficult to understand. To aid in clearing this up, multiple references to small wireless permits, facilities were eliminated, and rather just all sort of consolidated into their own section. And that, I think, really changed the dynamics of it, makes it easier to open up and kind of figure out, okay, if I'm doing this type of wireless communication facility, this is the type of permitting process that is going to be required. Prior to the urgency ordinance, wireless facilities required a use permit, just as an overhyped structure. That was two sentences within our existing performance standards. So that, this will replace that standard, but to kind of get rid of that confusion, we did make some quick amendments to those sections to make it clear that they're now subject to this, this new section of the ordinance. It also, let's see, references what types of wireless communication facilities require what types of permits in each zoning district, that it's much more clearly spelled out than it was in just the urgency ordinance. When the planning commission, the planning commission initially was going back and forth making on whether or not, what kind of review each what kind of review each of these wireless communication facilities should be subject to. There was some talk initially of making them all subject to the planning commission's review and approval. But it kind of broke down in that, you know, some of the limitations that were provided by the FCC, their timeframes for some of these reviews made that difficult. But I think it's spelled out much better now as to what types of uses require what type of permitting. Whereas before, you had to kind of do a lot of digging. I think those are the major changes. All in all, I believe the proposed recommended changes by the planning commission make it far more stronger and usable ordinance for the city. While the FCC does not permit denial of a project based on radio frequency criteria, which I know is always a hot topic issue when we start talking about the 5G integration and all those sort of things, one tool that is now in our pocket with this ordinance is although we can't change those federal standards, we do have a criteria in the ordinance that we can do an independent review. We can charge the applicant to have a peer review of their radio frequency study to make sure that it does indeed comply with those federal standards. Because that's something that's completely outside of the realm of my capacity, for sure. The other sort of pieces that the planning commission really addressed and dug into pretty hard was the idea of the aesthetic principles. That's the one area that we still retain some control over. And this ordinance places a lot of positioning on stealth sort of design. So, and one of the things that we did change, you'll see recommended in there, is in addition to providing kind of site views of what it's going to look like, that if that is in an area that will be viewed and visible from an environmentally sensitive area or a protected view shed as defined by our general plan, a site simulation of what impact it has on that view shed is a required portion of the application. So there were a lot of measures, small measures like that that were integrated into. So I think all in all, this is, it was, the urgency ordinance itself gave us a lot more tools than we ever had, and we strengthened that up by adding a few more pieces and integrating it into our existing ordinance. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. It was quite a feat.
Dan?
Did quite a bit of digging and making it work.
Awesome. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from council?
Not a question, but the planning commission and the staff did a great job. I mean, just all the information that this thing does, I just read most of it. It just amazes me how much you can get into this, and it was a good job. It was very in-depth.
Okay. Anything else from council?
I think it's that work that you did ahead of time to make the zoning ordinance synchronized and easier for anybody to pick up if they're interested in a certain location that actually promotes Lakeport as business-friendly. So thank you for doing that.
Seeing nothing else from council, I will open the public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to come up and say their piece.
Good evening. Ms. Cruzika. I guess call me Miss Cellphone Tower. Man, this has been going on a long time. It took a year regarding North High Street location. I think it took 10 years off my life, and that of the neighbors. And I have several concerns. I'm sorry I didn't get here before this because it looks like you've had a couple of friends on this. Looks like this started in April of last year. And since April of last year, you have approved undergrounding for 11th Street and not the High Street, which I've requested. And if it's, maybe it's fake news, but the record B said that this would allow facilities to go on telephone poles. Is this correct? I'm trying to find it in here.
That's a provision of those FCC regulations.
Well, once again, I'm going to ask you that you include in your 11th Street plan the tributary of High Street to 11th Street. I just doubt I had enough feeling like a stepchild up here. I just got my tax bills, and they're ridiculous, especially for fire fees. I just feel like this is a rounded-out way to stick us with cell towers in a high-density neighborhood with light commercial. And in favor of putting all your efforts towards 11th Street in the core of Lakeport, you've got to keep in mind that the Lakeport city limits currently go where they go north and where they go south. And there's an awful lot of tension to annexing south. Please, let's take care of what we got now. I have a couple of questions about proposing. In Section 17.41.30, and the pages aren't numbered unless, I don't understand how they get numbered. But this section applies to all proposed new or modified wireless communication facilities. Modify. I don't know what you ever did with North High Street. I know it kept getting extended for Verizon was pushing you that they were going to sue you if you didn't let them put in that facility. And I'm wondering if B, does this allow staff to OK what was proposed for just north of 1873 North High Street?
No, that was never an approved facility. So it would not apply to it.
It would not apply to it. Because you're switching from the staff OK modifications based on interpretation. I hate to see this get out of the public's review of what they feel is environmentally, well, you can't use environmentally, but aesthetically pleasing, and leave it up to city staff. Let's hear what the public has to say. Because the photographs that were used for Verizon to try to convince everyone that their facility would go there were very deceiving. They were not really what we, as the public, saw. But people that photographed them for Verizon did it in such a way that it looked wonderful. But when you got out and you measured, you saw where it was going to be in the impact coming into the city off Lake Shore Boulevard was going to be really yucky. So that's a concern. Really should allow the planning commission to have hearings and give from the public how they feel about the aesthetics of our city. And then on the next page, turn it over. It says, it doesn't, exceptions shall not apply to city-owned wireless communication facilities. Come on, let's do what we require of our neighbors. And on the next page, A, are mounted on structures 50 feet or less in heights, including their antenna. Wasn't it previously 35 feet? That a cell phone tower could only go 35 feet?
Which section are you on your?
I'm on, let's see, applicable facilities. And the exceptions that are mounted on structures 50 feet or less in height, including their antenna. I thought it was previously 35-foot minimum?
35 is the zoning, 35 is the height limit in the commercial zoning district. And that's their only reason.
It was.
Yes.
But now this is saying 50 feet.
I don't see 50.
70. Let's see, exceptions. This section shall not apply if they're mounted on structures 50 feet or less in height. It's A when you turn over the page. So anyway, I'm wondering about that. It looks like it's given another 15 feet. Maybe.
So is that in reference to the small mobile units that they're talking about wanting to put on all the telephone bowls?
No. Those would be small wireless.
I was speaking about when we were doing the High Street thing. I didn't think it was more than 35 feet. And they were getting use permit because they wanted to go, what, 70 feet? I can't remember. It's been years ago, and I'm getting old and forgetful.
To be honest with you, Nancy, I mean, if that High Street one came in with these criteria, we would have a lot more
Okay.
at our disposal, too.
Thank you. That was my concern.
Yeah, this doesn't put High Street back on the table.
No, no, for sure.
Okay. But once again, I'd like to see more go to the planning commission for public input rather than determined by one or two staff members. First, it says structural analysis and a noise study. Something I noticed because looking a lot of years at engineering things is that I think it's best that when you tell a company or an applicant that they need to provide an engineering study, that they pay for it, and the city, public entity, hires the consultant. So they aren't padding the information. I don't know quite what to call it. And so about telephone poles, are they going to be allowed on High Street to add to telecommunications facilities to the telephone poles? Because if we were doing undergrounding, we wouldn't have that fear in our neighbor.
If they're in the public right-of-way, regardless of telephone poles, there are new provisions for those FCC regulations that are beyond our control at the staff level.
So I'm just concerned, is 11th Street going to have telecommunications facilities? Or is it all going to come over to High Street, which has telephone poles?
11th Street would be no different than High Street.
Well, they'd probably come to High Street because what we learned, they're really cheap. They want us to have as little investment as possible, and I'm concerned about that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you for doing this. It looks like a lot of work went into it. And I hope that we still have control of the aesthetics of our city, that we keep it clean, we keep it neat, and we track new business. We have far too many vacancies on Main Street.
Thank you. So this allows us to maintain the control of the aesthetics of these boxes that will show up?
Absolutely. And if anything, like I said in my report, our previous, before even the urgency ordinance, we were relying upon two sentences within the performance standards and then our use permit process. This adds substantially more criteria for, it gives us a lot more tools in the aesthetic region as well as other elements as well that we did not have.
Thank you.
So Kevin, doesn't this also like clarify and streamline if somebody had some questions or anything? I mean, the last thing you want to do if you're business-friendly is to send everything to the planning commission, say, well, we have to check this out. They can go to the ordinance, they can go to the chapter, and they can go to the verse, and they can check it out, and they can immediately see what needs to be done and how it needs to be done and the whole situation streamlined for business or prospective projects, and it's all clarified simply.
Yes, and that was clearly something we wanted to do. And we added that. That's why it includes all those, you know, 20 different sections at the end. And just to lay concerns, I mean, any new large wireless facility, such as what was proposed out there at High Street, does not bypass the planning commission. That is still something that would be reviewed. The only things that are reviewed in-house are, you know, some co-location facilities and some very small facilities. But most other, you know, any larger structure would still be subject to review and approval by the planning commission.
And just to be clear, when you say small facilities, you mean the little telephone-mounted?
That's correct.
Yeah, not how the industry defines small.
Yeah.
refrigerator.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Michael Green. I just want to come up here and thank staff again. We did go through quite a bit of work organizational. I mean, trying to get our heads around what a wireless facility is and a small wireless facility. I think revised ordinance clarifies that quite a bit. There's a new track process. So what it does, I think, is very appropriate. Some of the frustrations that we didn't address in the ordinance, I don't know if it's business-friendly or not. I don't know how much more business-friendly the FCC can get to big telecoms. It's what we can't address. And what we weren't able to address was what's coming down the pipeline. You know, is it going to be a bunch of small 5Gs on telephone bowls? Are they going to encourage them to co-locate on large wireless facilities? Are we going to have a 5G antenna every two blocks on Main Street? Are they going to be up in residential areas? And one of my personal frustrations is we weren't able to look at the cumulative impacts of what might be coming down the road. We just don't know what we don't know about 5G. And if you watch TV and you see the T-Mobile thing and this laser beam 5G stuff looking high-powered, but then the FCC tells us it's all low-powered, nothing to worry about. And by the way, because of the expedited timelines that small wireless facilities get, we don't get planning commission review. There's really no public notification of this. So I just want to do a shout-out to staff again. There was a lot of hard work in my fellow commissioners. We did kind of tweak it. So that's why you do see a lot of revisions that it is. What we weren't able to reach was, I think, some of those concerns the public will have as these 5G antennas come online. How many, where are they going to go? What type of public notice? What can we actually brag about? And we don't even know at this point what aesthetic concerns we can raise about 5G antennas. We don't even know what they look like yet. And the last time we did talk about cellphone antennas, we couldn't get a proper-looking tree to disguise it. So it's important. I mean, it built off the urgency ordinance that was necessitated by the federal action. I think it clarified the use permit process. But that's about it. And I think we're going to have more questions about 5G as we move forward. And I just, I hope the council will take it for what it is, as useful in terms of exercising what discretion the city has, but also recognizing the city doesn't have much discretion at all on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
So lastly, Kevin, so when we have these FCC regulations So lastly Kevin, so when we have these FCC regulations come through, we get what we get and we have to deal with the, whatever the regulations are and we have to deal, just like, for example, with the cell phone tower, if they say we're underserved, we have to do something and we have to agree to agree, and if we don't agree then we have to say no. But we agree that we need the service, but we're not putting it there, and so we have to keep going and going and going because there's requirements at the FCC and we have to meet those requirements. And when they come down with this new stuff, whatever it happens to be, we have no control over, we have to just deal with the, with so much of the outflow that comes out of it and we just have to try and scramble. But this is to take care of the other things that we can control.
Yes, and to do my best attempt at being an eternal optimist, I think regardless of, you know, the rules tightened on us by the FCC, but, you know, it's been a goal of ours for a while to have a telecommunications ordinance. This isn't exactly the way we envisioned getting it, but we now have a lot more tools in our pocket than we did previously with just those two or three sentences in the middle.
Well, is there any other comments from the public? See none, I will close the public hearing and bring you back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance modifying chapter seventeen point four-one and amending chapter seventeen point zero-three, seventeen point zero-four, seventeen point zero-five, seventeen point six, seventeen point zero-seven, seventeen point eight, seventeen point zero-nine, seventeen ten, seventeen point eleven, seventeen twelve, seventeen point thirteen, seventeen point fourteen, seventeen point sixteen, and seventeen point twenty-eight of the Lakeport Municipal Code to permit the regulated wireless facilities within the city of Lakeport.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for all your hard work on this. It's absolutely a lot. And preserving what, you know, what we do, preserving what control we have over this. It amazes me, we're going to put these up, we don't want you to. Well, well, we're going to put them up. Okay, well, they need to look pretty. That's what we get. Sorry. Moving on to council business, Library Park Promenade.
Okay, I promise this is my last item that you guys suffer through this evening, but this one's more fun, I believe, so.
Yeah, awesome.
You know, one of the key elements for quite some time, but definitely it's actually, you know, written out there in black and white in the Lakeport Lakefront Revitalization Plan that was approved by your council a couple of years back. One of the most popular items, unifying items that residents and members of the community alike would like to see along our waterfront is a promenade. And that was reiterated again when we went through the Prop 68 park ramp process there, looking at natural high over and over again, you know, the preservation of the views, access, and the promenade right along the waterfront. So our first shot at this, maybe not the way we wanted it, but with the storms and the need to replace that seawall replacement, we do have the opportunity now to look at how we want to put that promenade, you know, where the pavement meets the road per se, of what kind of design we want to see there. So with the seawall replacement on track to begin here very shortly, the next logical step is how we want to replace that walking path right along the waterfront, and then keeping in mind that this is just the first portion of a larger process, you know. Hopefully here we are able to secure that Prop 68 grant, but regardless, if we push forward, working with the school on that natural high property, it'd be nice to see a promenade along there. Then it's the next logical step to tie those two together along the property the city already owns there between the Third and Fifth Boat Street ramp. And then even, you know, going steps further down the line, you know, maybe someday with the help of some of the private property owners continuing that path along the entire waterfront there as the lakefront plan kind of proposes. With that said, I've been married now for fifteen years and I've become acutely aware that I am not qualified to pick colors or designs. So we took this, we took a number of different options, kind of looking at some of the stamped concrete that we have already used with some success in the park plans, and presented these options to the Parks and Rec Commission a couple of months back. Their first meeting, they reviewed it, we had quite a good discussion. They wanted to table it and go take a look a little closer at how those were actually being used out there. And in our last meeting last month, we came back and the planning, or the, I'm sorry, not the planning, but the Parks and Rec Commission reviewed those designs, all three of them that we presented or presented in your packet today, but their recommendation was the utilization of a stamped boardwalk kind of wood plank sort of design. Very, so it's the exact same sort of design that we have right now existing with the Fifth Street boat ramps, if you've been down there and taking a look. So that's kind of the couple of design options that are on the table, and that's the recommended design that came out of our discussion with the Parks and Rec Commission. So with that, I am turning it over to you guys to make the fun and hard decisions and discuss.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from council?
Couple of questions. Seems how this is going to be hopefully the whole waterfront, but we're only doing a small section at this point. Are we going to purchase the stamps or are we going to rely on the company who does this one section going to be around long enough to do other things?
We did the stamp work with, well, I did not do it, no you don't want me. Public Works staff, I know Jim Kennedy's team did the stamp work out there in front of the Fifth Street boat ramp, and I'm pretty sure we have that stamp. I don't know that for a fact, but I don't know.
We have those stamps.
Okay. That's what a concern was mine, is we did one section done and then the next one doesn't look like it, and we got our stamps, that's.
There's no guarantee even with having the stamp, the next section's going to look like it.
Well, no, because, no, the thing is, is you're going to have color changes and stuff, but at least you have.
The stamps.
Yeah.
And that was part of the discussion with, at the Parks and Rec Commission level was kind of that entered into their discussion was that that wood plank, knowing that this is going to be developed over time, was one of the designs that, you know, it would looks a little, would looks different as it is, so would looks slightly different here than it does there, it still all ties together nicely.
That's some good, good forward thinking, especially because we already own the stamp. So, you know, utilization of supplies we already have is always excellent.
Yeah. I was wondering in the lakefront plan, were there any design options in the plan?
It didn't specifically, I mean, some of the different visual representations all sort of show varying degrees of different types of path, but it did not delineate one path over another.
I just, my question is why is it not just concrete? Why does it have to be stamped with anything?
It doesn't have to be.
I think it's because people think it will look pretty.
Okay.
Same reason you have red bricks in the car.
Yeah.
For crosswalks.
It's not exactly the same, because that's supposed to be a traffic calming thing, I think, as well. The stamped brick pattern.
Well, I don't, when I look at it, they're all really busy and they're all going to fill up with a bunch of dirt and dunks that's not going to clean out of any of it. All of them have all these grooves and spaces that are going to just be disgusting. Well, there's a big difference between a smooth, clean concrete, it's a lot easier to fling when it needs to be flinged than the stuff with all these grooves in it. And so it just made me wonder why do we have to have, why does it have to be so busy?
Well, it doesn't have to, doesn't have to have to council.
Well, I just, I know that you spent a lot of time looking at this. I don't like any of them personally, I think that we don't need that. A cleaner look would look a lot better. We have the piers and the docks out there that have, you know, dimension and they're not wood either. What is a metal? Why would we put this big wood stamp next to metal docks and grass and it's just, we're going to spend more money to have this and then we're going to spend more money to keep it clean? And are we really getting something visually pleasing? I'm not convinced.
I'm not sure that finished concrete wouldn't cost more than stamp site.
I don't know.
Labor-wise, because they put the thing in, and, I mean, quite frankly, I thought that the wood thing was pretty cool. And, yeah, I mean, if I were riding a skateboard or something like that, maybe I want the smooth concrete, but, you know, smooth concrete is great for like, you know, the first year or two and then there's cracks and blah, blah, blah. The others, this thing here, it would hide all that stuff, and our parks crew is so good at cleaning and blowing and polishing and shining, and I think it just adds, I mean, we always say, when you have a piece of furniture and it gets all banged up, we go, hey, well, it's textured, it's textured.
Yeah.
It's textured. And, you know, it's like character. And, you know, I mean, I like smooth concrete as well as the next guy, but I think that, I like the wood thing, I think it looks cool. I think it'd be a lot less work than having some guy out there smoothing and polishing and smoothing and reaching out with a big thing and doing all that stuff and making it all perfect.
I don't know.
And I'm betting that, and I don't know that everybody's so fastidious as you are worried about, you know, the dust and the debris between the cracks, you know. I think it'll kind of like, well, it's just natural texture.
People are very visual and they see the whole space, and when it's nice and clean, that's part of it being appealing.
Well, one other thing that stamped concrete does, because I had it put in around my house.
Yeah.
Is it will.
He's biased.
No, no, it will hide cracks, small cracks.
Oh, for sure.
Because if you got smooth, you're going to see those small cracks all the time. But in a wood plank thing, you're going to see, it's going to follow the groove, so it's going to height in the groove. So you're going to get a longer lasting finish.
Ron, in your estimation, how much more difficult would it be to clean and maintain the wood grained concrete than it would be the smooth?
Well, it's not that hard to clean the small section of stamped concrete we have down by the Fifth Street boat ramp, and we would certainly take care of whatever council decided to have installed there.
Cop out. He knows he's on camera. He's running for office.
Well, I've attended a number of Main Street cleanup days and I have swept flat concrete and I have swept the really annoying brick pattern things where all the cigarette butts like to hold and hide. And I can tell you that the flat concrete is a heck of a lot faster to clean. So if we're talking about cigarette butts floating around, which they tend to do, I like the wood grain, but I think Councilor Martina does have a point. This is, the wood grain is a lot better than the brick stamping with all those grooves in it. But, but yeah, I could, I mean, I can picture them now, thanks Stacy, totally just voided my mind. I could see all the cigarette butts in these wood planks. So it will be there, but the cost differential.
I've just been on a lot of boardwalks and I've never seen them this busy. They're usually just, I don't know, I'm trying to look around for photos online to see what, what did Eureka do on their boardwalk?
I think theirs is a mix of concrete and then real boardwalk. I mean, they do have a couple of areas that have real, you know, board.
Wood board and then concrete, right?
And you do have the other concrete coming into it from Library Park that, I don't know what that would look like.
It's going to.
Just a thought, and how that all blends in together.
But it would be with the long-term goal of either going with all the flat concrete or all of the wood concrete. It wouldn't go all at once.
It's just the boardwalk, right? So you're saying the concrete that goes into the park is still vintage concrete?
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, I would vote just to make it smooth.
Is there anything else from council? I'm going to open it to the public. Is there any public opinion on smooth versus wood-stamped concrete?
July, everyone, orderly captions.
Come on, I'll bet, thank you, thank you, I'm a win taker.
No opinion, but a question. Did Park and Rec Commission address whether the stamped concrete would have enhanced safety over smooth concrete in terms of a slip and fall?
Yeah, no, I mean, maybe not directly one against the other, but I mean, that was certainly a question they had, and was that, you know, are these ADA compliant, the slip, you know, and these all, these all would meet those standards.
So no difference?
Not that I, that I don't know, I'm sure there is a slight difference between, but they would all be safe, ADA compliant, and non-slip resistance. Or did I say that wrong?
Slip resistance.
Well, now's your chance, do you want to give your input of what you want? No pressure.
Can we go back to 5G? How about a use permit process where we can. Each section of the promenade. I'm okay with the Park and Rec's commission and recommendation, just because I think you should listen to your conclusions.
Tell them like service in the Alex pit?
The other thing that I say about.
I don't, we did give them a smooth option. I think the closest we ever came to it was there was some discussion and concern, you know, because some of those presented schematics that we had, you know, they weren't all just straight paths, they were meandering and they bowled out a little bit. So there was definitely some discussion on how would the wood plank look, you know, you know, a straight path versus a curving path, and their kind of, their conclusion was that you could make the wood plank still fit in a curved area, and if you bowled an area out to be a little wider, that that design would still work. But in fairness, we didn't look at a.
Do we decide it back to them to reconsider a fourth option?
When do we have to have a decision on this? We have some time?
We have time. I mean, it, you know, it's not physically tied to the seawall. The seawall can certainly go forward without it and we can just compact dirt up to the front. It's just, you know, kind of the natural order of things is we do want to get a path back there sooner rather than later, but it's not immediate, no.
I'd really like to take a pause and make sure we really think this through, because this is a huge design feature to our entire lakefront. It's the entire promenade, it's the highlight of the project, and I don't think we should just pick one of these and, I mean, I think we need to look at all the options and really think about what it's going to look like.
The one thing that I say about picking a stamped concrete or flat is, once you make a stamped concrete, it'll be a pathway along the side. Everybody will know this is a continuous pathway down the front of the thing. Smooth concrete is going to go everywhere. It's not an actual long way, like a pathway.
Well, I think we're all kind of visioning different things and we need to somehow maybe go back to the lakefront plan and look at where are we talking about, like, what does this look like? And I'm not against stamped concrete, it could be really beautiful, but I don't see the big picture right now of it. Right now, it's too much, the thought of it mixing through, and I don't think that we should rush and decide this right now. And I think that they did a good job picking between the three options, for sure, but I think maybe we should spend more time on it personally. That's a really big deal and it's going to be there for a really long time.
Well, I think that, first of all, I do agree that when we have a committee, of course, it wasn't the full committee, but I don't know that they had all the options, maybe, I think if clear, you know, plain concrete would have been the other, then they could discuss things like the cracks and slip and falls and all that stuff. And then I'm thinking that, you know, we got five of us up here and we're putting up a piece of concrete that's going to be in there in perpetuity, and should we be making it without, you know, some kind of like stakeholders thing again, like, okay, we're, I know we did this, but we're getting ready to make a decision and Stacy doesn't like, you know, the stamp, because it could get cigarette butts in it, and is it going to be cool when there's a bulb out? I don't have a problem with sending it back, maybe saying, hey, take a look, it's smooth, and then maybe a conceptual, I like George's idea that if it's a boardwalk, there's the boardwalk, that's where we go. There's all these tributaries going off of it that are all smooth and mostly smooth and easy to clean. So, yeah, I get all that, and I think, you're right, maybe we should send it back and say, hey, did you consider this? And then let us know.
Well, maybe we can get some input from the lakefront design people. Maybe they can say, hey, we've seen this go in here, it was beautiful, we've seen this over here, here's some more things to consider.
Yeah, I think it's too much of a thing to just drop on us and go, hey, what do you think? And then we're like.
It's not like we're painting this room, it's a big deal.
So if we're talking about what's going to look good for the long run and what the community would want, and the community would want to see in the long run, would it be possible for us to put out there, have the commission get their top four designs, get a design made of it, smooth than the ones that they submitted, put them up on the wall, and when people come in to pay their water bill, they get a little sticker and they can put it on the one they like? I'm serious, because there's.
It's too democratic.
There's five of us up here going, well, we should do it this way, we should do it this way. How about we ask them what they want in their park? And we let them put up their little sticker and have their vote on it and then, you know, let that decide which way we go.
So they elected you to make a good decision.
They elected me to remind them that they can help make these decisions, you're absolutely right. By putting on stickers. That's what I would personally like to see happen, but what are we doing now? Are we stamping concrete? Are we not stamping concrete? It sounds like we're holding off one way or the other. We should probably direct staff to do something.
Would you like us to take this back to Parks and Rec again, give them another option on this and.
We'll just make sure that they looked at that option. We don't know if they did or did not at this point.
They did. They did.
And the other thing that, but Tim, don't we have something out there as a webpage about their parks and stuff? And we could put out the four different things and say.
But going through Facebook, you would get a bunch of errand, and maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing to have, you know.
I would wait right now, I mean, I would think we should come up with some more options, not just a fourth option, but we should really just go back and look at it. I just feel like we're rushing into it and here's three options and I just.
It's a good idea that you mentioned the designers, maybe they do have.
I would think if there's professional sex, could you give us some advice?
But then again, you know, if you go to an option that we don't have a stamp for, we're costing a lot of money, so that's another thing too, so.
Well, you know, I wish I had a little bit more. Well, you know, I, this is where I wish I had a little bit more design skills on. But I'm sure we can find somebody to, you know, to, we, you know, to somebody to run something like this through some sort of Adobe or, you know, SketchUp program and just throw the path out there and have a little bit more, you know, rather than just. I mean, that, that was a complaint by the planning or the Parks and Rec Commission, you know. You know, for, for instance, I mean, initially they were really liking the slate stamped concrete. But then when they went and looked at what it looks like in, you know, a larger setting, then it became, you know, the least favorite choice. So we can do a little bit more schematic work to give some better options, better, better take on it. Take it back to the, the Parks and Rec Commission with, looking at it with the, the standard concrete design as well. Throw more information out. This is why I don't pick home. Exactly why I don't.
Well, make sure when you take it back to the parks and, you know, we're not opposed to what they've done. I mean, we're just thinking here, here's another option, did you guys check it out? Because we don't want to say, you know, we don't like your decision, yada, yada, yada.
No, I, I think we'll be clear.
And I was, I attended those meetings too and the council could do the same thing that the Park and Rec Commission did. And that's go out to the park.
Right, at the Fifth Street bathroom?
At the Fifth Street bathroom is where the wood plank area is already being used. And then the, the slate, the random slate is used just on the other side of the yacht club. That would be the south side of the yacht club where that other sort of round bench, concrete bench is. And then there's another spot over by the children's play park area, I think that's, that's random slate as well. We do not have currently anywhere the, the great brick stamp, but I think that's pretty easy to visualize what, what that would look, that kind of more cobblestone sort of look. And then obviously the, the straight concrete, there's plenty of examples of that, both straight and meandering, so.
Okay, are we clear on the direction?
Just a.
Wonderful. Nothing further, I take it? We will now move into city council communications.
Wait, 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 one more, one more.
Okay, now we go. Sorry, chief.
That's all right. Mayor and council, what you have before you tonight is a request to consider adopting a resolution in support of the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. It's a ballot initiative that would be put before the voters in November of 2020. I know I gave you a rather extensive package of documents and I'm going to try to summarize that up in a concise presentation. But as you recall, back in 2011, the state of California implemented what was known as Assembly Bill 109. It's commonly referred to as the realignment of the criminal justice system. And what that did basically is say that in all but 60 of the most serious felonies in California, that if a person was sent to state prison time, they would do their time in a county jail. And instead of being on state parole, they would be placed under post-community supervision through the local probation department rather than parole. Then in 2014, we had Proposition 47, which was called the Safe Schools and Neighborhoods Act of 2014. That was a ballot initiative that was passed by the voters and what that did was it, it did a few things. It reduced most of the, the hard drug possession crimes to misdemeanors. But it also reduced a lot of the punishment for theft crimes. Most significantly, most significantly, the fact that in, prior to that, if you, let's say you had, you were a serial thief and you got caught for your third shoplifting in, where you had previously served jail time, that could be charged as a felony. Now with the Prop 47, theft has increased because there is really no significant consequences for the theft. For example, you could be convicted of 100, 200 or more prior theft convictions. You're, you're never going to be charged with a felony if you steal under $950. Then in 2016, there was a ballot initiative called Proposition 57, which changed a lot of the sentencing laws. I actually came before this council to request a resolution opposing that, which, which this council supported at that time. But that ended up passing by the voters. So what the Keeping California Safe Act and Reducing Crime intends to do is not, not change any of those initiatives or laws, but add some, some new laws and some other sections to address some of the, the consequences that happened due to all this other legislation and voter initiatives that had previously occurred over the last eight or nine years. And the, the significant parts of what this ballot initiative would do is number one, it would expand a list of violent crimes where an early release from prison is not an option. So one of the things that, that we talked about when Proposition 57 was before the voters is the fact that California has different sections in the, in the penal code. One of them which lists violent crimes and that's a shorter list of what the, the state had determined as quote violent crimes. And then there's another list of other serious felonies that, that are classified as serious felonies. But the average person would believe that the, the nature of those crimes are in fact violent crimes. And there's a list of just a few of those that include, for example, domestic violence, felony elder abuse, assault with a deadly weapon, drive-by shootings, exploding a bomb to injure people. Certain things like that that are serious felonies, but, but weren't classified as violent. So this would seek to expand a list of violent felonies. The other thing that it would do is it would address DNA, continued DNA collection on criminal suspects. So when, when the drug crimes reduced to misdemeanors, there was no, no longer DNA collected. Because if you get arrested for a felony, your DNA is collected, which is data that, that can be maintained and we can go back and solve crimes statewide, nationwide when we have DNA profiles. So this, this would add back in some DNA testing for arrests on some of those crimes. It, it would also require under, under parole, that the parole hearings consider an inmate's entire criminal history before deciding if they're going to get parole, not just their most recent offense, which was another effect of Proposition 57. So you might have somebody with a very serious criminal history that may not perform well on parole, but the parole board is, is not allowed to consider all of that right now, where they previously were. Now, if this initiative passed, it could be added back in where they can review that stuff. And lastly, serial theft, which is probably the biggest problem facing our community here in Lakeport and statewide. And that's we've, we've seen, you know, statewide increase crime levels due to property crimes, thefts and things of that nature throughout the state, but, but also very significantly here. And a lot of that ties to the fact that, you know, you can go steal up to $949 worth of stuff and you're only ever going to be charged with a misdemeanor. And when you do get convicted, no one's ever going to check on you. Because the probation department, you know, checks on felony supervised probationers. But if a court puts somebody on misdemeanor probation, there's, there's, there's no one out there that's, other than a police officer that runs across this person, that's, that's going to investigate really anything or try to hold them accountable. So this would add back a serial felony theft where if you, you stole over $250 or you had three prior offenses, you can now be charged with felony again. Which is something that I feel that would, would go back to holding people accountable and maybe reduce some of the, some of this continued theft when there's no consequences. You know that you're only going to be put on probation, you're not going to do jail time, no one's ever going to check on you. And then I just want to cite, you know, one example. We've been dealing with this for, for many years now. And we know that a lot of our businesses, specifically some of the bigger ones, have, you know, been losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in merchandise, which not only affects them, but it also affects, you know, that's a loss of sales tax because that merchandise was stolen, not available to be sold. But I recently talked to one of our local businesses, Grocery Outlet, who is a big supporter in our community and has done a lot for, for a lot of different programs in this community. But in a recent discussion with him, his estimate, the owner, Mr. Hanson, is that six months theft-related losses coming up to the end of this year are estimated to come out at about $100,000. That's on top of another $50,000 they've had to spend to increase security to try and prevent, try to keep that number down. And what a lot of people don't realize is that this type of theft has hurt a, a major business to the point that, that they can't support or donate to a lot of the community programs they've done in the past. And that, that's one thing that, that they cited that, you know, really was something that was upsetting to them. Is that, you know, they have to look at reducing those kinds of things. And just the ongoing, you know, the fact that they've seen, you know, people going in there and price checking to make sure, you know, that they've only got $900 worth of stuff, so they can't be charged with a felony. I mean, there's people in there with calculators, clip cords, checking prices, adding things up. This is not, I mean, this is a very common thing that's going on in California right now and it is happening here as well. So, and then just to wrap it up, there's, there's been numerous cities in California and you have the list and the reports that were presented to you that have already, their city councils have already voted to support this initiative. So that is a summary of, of what's going on currently. And I would respectfully ask the council to consider supporting this 2020 initiative.
Thank you, Chair. I will bring it to council.
Well, I'd just like to say that I don't think a lot of people realize that retail grocery, the, the average net, net profit is 1%. Shoplifting is twice that. So they steal more than double what the Hanson's make or what they make up at Riviera Foods or what we make over at Lakeview. They steal double that every day. And the sad thing is, is that I remember Chief said that I think Kmart, two years before they closed down, they had almost $365,000 worth of theft going on in one year. I think it was somewhere around, it was close to $350,000.
It was at least $350,000.
It was basically like a thousand dollars a day. But the problem is there's no consequences. I'm going to tell you a little scenario. Just this happened last week in Lucerne. I had a guy up on the ladder doing some roof work. He came in, said, hey, which one of you clowns stole the ladder? Somebody went through the alley, stole a ladder while he was upstairs, up working, doing some roof patching. Okay, then we had a neighbor in the big windstorm, I drove by and the guy's face blew down. Well, in the middle of the night, they knocked over his vans, broke into his shed, stole his generator. And this was like just a few feet from the, the store there. It was actually contiguous to our parking lot. Stole his brand-new generator. But since it's worth less than $950, the guy's going to be scot-free. Great, there's great sales going on on those. I heard the other day from dispatching, one day they stole seven generators in one day in Clearlake, seven of them. And one of them was out in a truck in the Walmart parking lot. He ran in for five minutes, came out and was already gone. That's how quick it went. We had two people try and steal two different generators during the PSPS. We had two different incidents where they tried to steal them. Then we have, I have to tell you, we've lost over 200 shopping carts in, since we've been at Lakeview. So I bought 30 more and in less than one month, 15 of them are already gone. And I'm down to 15. I had them all sequestered because I wasn't going to need them. And then I was talking to one of my employees, I said, this is really getting bad. And we're going to have to, you know, people are going to start getting hurt because they're complaining about the sheriff's department not coming over. They have no tools to do anything about it. There's no, they cite, release, cite, release, cite, release. And said something's going to have to be done. Five minutes after that conversation, a guy came up, he just bought his 12-year-old son a brand-new 125 motorcycle. They broke into his backyard, stole the brand-new motorcycle. This was all within a seven-day period. Then yesterday at 2:05, I had two little thugs come in and they both grabbed as many potato chips as they could. And they looked like they were between 16 and 17 years old. They grabbed them and they ran out the door and we have them on camera going in the door and out the door. And, but the thing is, what if we catch them? We beat them up, we go to jail. We get them, they cite them, they release them. There's no consequences. I talked to one of my employees, he was in jail, he was a former employee. He was in jail with a guy that went to Safeway. And he said, yeah, I used to deal with your dad, who was a drug dealer. I used to go in the morning, get $500 worth of groceries, go back at noon, get $500 worth of meat, change my clothes and go back to Safeway in the afternoon and buy, steal $500 worth of liquor. They won't even touch him. $1,500 bucks a day, they were doing that. Serial crime like that, you catch them, it's nothing but a misdemeanor. You can't do a thing about it. And the policies, Kmart generally has a speaking, hands-off, Safeway, don't even touch them, don't touch them. They don't want to get sued because of a workman's comp or somebody gets hurt getting beat up, so they just let them go. So basically, open season, all retail grocers, all retailers. They steal so much money down at Dollar General because they only have two checkers. Once their staff gets done stocking groceries, they have two people in the check stand. One of my girls was down there taking somebody down to buy groceries and she went in the store and said, hey, somebody's unloading the clothing rack into this car. And they go, well, we don't have anybody to do anything about it. Just drove off with all this stuff. It's just open season because the, the cops don't have any tools to work with. There's nothing they can do about it. Now understand, Clearlake, they're taking them all the way to jail just so they have to find their way back home, even though they can't hold them there. It's just to make their life miserable. But I totally back the whole thing. It's just gotten out of hand. I am totally disgusted about the despicable fraudulent naming of a, of a ballot initiative that sounds like it's a good thing, knowing that a lot of our fellow voters never read them. And what was it, the Safe Schools or the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act? That is the biggest fraudulent lie and deception. And every single law enforcement agency in the state was against that and nobody bothered to read it. But because of the title, which I think is, is criminal that they did that. And now look at the consequences of $2.5 billion in what, 2014, on, on property losses. And it's just going up every day. And crime, as you reported just before those went down, you were talking about Prop 57, we need, crime is on the way down. Since then, it's just been open door to crime and it's ridiculous.
Well, hopefully this measure will bring some solutions to a lot of, some of those issues at least. Is there anyone else from council? No? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution supporting the Keeping California Safe Act.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right.
Good job, chief.
Now on to city council communications. Margaret?
Nothing to report.
David?
No report, thank you.
Ron?
Not a. No report.
Nothing tonight?
Kevin?
Margaret, did you want to talk about our appeal with PJD?
Oh, yes. It was in the news this morning. We won our appeal with the CPUC and our, for the undergrounding, so they're not going to take our money. The rule 28.
So we're going to get our $1,200 bucks away.
It was $4,900, but it was.
I just heard tonight that we were totally undergrounding.
Wish we had the money to do that, that would be awesome.
I was going, wow, where did that happen? She won the lottery.
Thank you, Margaret.
Just a reminder that the council is invited to be at Play Appreciation Lunch on Friday.
Awesome.
Starts around, yeah?
10? Or if you can just come to lunch.
I'll be teaching children.
Where's that at, Kelly? It's going to be at the community center.
Juan, is this cooking for us?
Oh, that's awesome.
Mariah?
I would be at League Leaders for the rest of this week, helping participate in brainstorming for priorities for the League. uh, brainstorming for priorities for the League of California Cities for the next year. So, if anybody has a priority that they think I don't already know about, feel free to email me at mturner@cityoflakeport.com. I'm always happy to take good ideas and jump in, mix, and participate. I invite everybody to join, everybody but me, because I won't be there at second Sunday breakfast. I bet Tina will be there, though. She's a good, steady customer there. So, second Sunday breakfast at the Lakeport Senior Center on Sunday, starting at 8:00. And then looking forward to the joint, um, board supervisors at City of Clearlake and City of Lakeport's meeting on Monday morning, to get our annual updates on the economic development.
I don't, I don't want to come here either.
Well, when, when is that?
I will also be teaching.
It starts at 9:00.
It's 9:00.
And it's at the same place it was last year, uh, Kelseyville Press.
Yes.
In Kelseyville. And then followed at 1:00. We just got our, um, our agenda for the ADHOC committee that was formed, uh, with, again, the board, two members of the board, uh, two members from each city council to discuss PSPS effects on our, on our county, and, um, start planning out some future communications to the CPUC, to our state elected officials. So, we're going to really be forming some information there. We do have that business survey that is ready to go out almost, um, that we'll be pushing out via email.
Should be out any, any time now.
Anytime, yeah. We're going to push it out around the lake, uh, not just, uh, in the Lakeport. It's led by, it was developed by a LEADAC or Lakeport, yeah, Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee. However, we're pushing out through business organizations throughout the lake, so that when this data comes back from our business owners, um, we'll have lake-wide real data to help, uh, direct our future communications. So, if, if you see that, or if you haven't seen it, please reach out, uh, you can call us at the city, you can email me. The more data we get, the better equipped we are to communicate effectively at the state level on that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
I just want to thank staff for Main Street. It sure looks beautiful and festive, and, um, it's too bad Dickens had to be canceled. I think this year we'll work on a better backup plan and, um, you know, Plan A and Plan B, instead of just nothing, so... Um, but I think everyone's enjoying Main Street, so that's awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, no. I, I just wanted to say, if anybody has any notes or any cars they want me to pass on to, uh, the police chief of Cloverdale, um, he threw our name in the hat for catering, so we're going to be heading over to Cloverdale to cook for them, since the City of Lakeport can't have us and won't have us, so... If you have any, any notes or anything you want me to slip to him, I'll be seeing him Saturday night, we'll be cooking for him, uh, over there in Cloverdale, so I'm looking forward to that. Be kind of fun. See him again.
George?
Uh, no report.
Um, the only thing I have is we start the ADHOC meetings for all of the commission appointments this Tuesday and Wednesday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. Today is Tuesday. Thank you. Um, and I will not, George will be flying solo on Thursday due to a scheduling conflict, but we will be making appointments and talking and doing all that, or bringing, not making appointments, but bringing back recommendations for appointments. That's all I've got, so... Jared? Have a good day.
Thank you.